And that grant is $600,000 for the 12-13 year. It is a three-year competitive grant at 1.8 million, correct? Greg, as we go through that. So that will carry through. It does require renewals, but it has the potential of $600,000 in each of the next two years as well.
Also, what we're working on with the superintendent here, Dr. Judd especially, is that continued negotiations on the wage freeze for all employees across the district to circulate regardless of your position. So those are the three areas, three key areas that we can say that we're deep in the trenches of implementing these strategies and an effort to meet our budget constraints. One of the other areas that is being reviewed, I know the superintendent is still busy, who all of you were regarding this at some length. He is continuing to refine the, refine and review the staff and class size requirements. We're looking at, of course, all the schools, elementary, all the elementary schools to review the class size guidelines. I am, he's working very closely with the building principals to determine what they feel appropriate class sizes, how that is going to impact achievement on the different grade levels, and refining staffing allocations. At the middle school, the superintendent is analyzing the concept of split teams and also the number of periods per day that middle school has right now. High school with the review of mandated courses to make sure that we can, have to meet all that, those requirements relative to staffing considerations and analyzing again the number of periods per day. Administration is also taking a look at, when we look at, when we're looking at everybody and trying to do an overview of everyone in the district, what they do and how they participate. Of course, we can't overlook the review and analysis of our administrative team, the function that they serve, each individual to the group, and the structure that we currently have to take a look at if there's anything we can do to restructure or realign positions. One of the things that I'm really starting to work on is basically starting from the ground up on the expenditure budgets. I know we've talked about a rollover budget, so we can say in generalities about what a rollover budget might look like, but I need to look at each line individually and budget, a line-by-line budget. That's my comfort level. I want to know exactly what needs to on every line. The only way to really do that is look at our history and compare that to where we are right now so that we can properly project where we think we need to be for 12-13. I'm reviewing all of our contractual increases. Those are things we've talked about a little bit in the past. Non-staffing related contracts, things that we're going to have to pay for, things that we're going to need to budget increases for, so we're estimating those. Our OC's budget is still not out. That really doesn't wrap until February again. We'll be starting to fill that as soon as that information becomes available. Be working with the building, building principals and the key budget builders to take into consideration their requests for different types of posters that may be available, things that perhaps we're not utilizing, things that maybe we really should have and we don't. So we'll be looking at all of that in the next month or so. Kind of jumped ahead, I already did speak about the third one. The evaluation of the current 11-12 expenditures, what we had actually spent in 10-11, and how we're going to use it as a projection for 12-13. We're going to actually quantify the cost of athletics. Superintendent, he has asked the athletic director to provide a lot of information to him that then I will utilize in trying to determine what the cost of athletics is. Now, we'll look from the staffing perspective, from equipment, from supplies, from insurance fees. Of course, and then a very large part of that is transportation. What does it cost relative to an athletic goods cost to transport? But we're not going to just pick on athletics. We will look at the cost of transportation district-wide. In the future, one of our future meetings, we look to present to you information on all the different runs that we have, where do we go, what schools do we bus to, and what do these costs look like and what can our projected cost be anticipated for 12-13. We're hoping that the governor does come out with this budget line, anticipate on the 17, because we really would like to get a look at the governor's budget. For good or for bad, superintendent and I were just saying this afternoon, it would be nice just to know something. So at least you know where you got to work from. So we are going to be looking, hopefully to get the governor's budget on the 17. We'll analyze the impact of what will have as a state aid working source. We're starting to get a little bit of incremental information, it's starting to trickle in on property tax limitation. So one of the things that I'm going to be doing very soon and I'm continuing to do is to update our property tax gap limitation formula. All the information doesn't come available once. We do have some of the data now, so I'll be taking a look at that again. An interesting opportunity has arisen where not only can we calculate our own property tax gap or limitation, which the district really is quite capable of doing, the issue is that there's a couple of different nuances in interpretation of what, how some of those numbers are derived. OC's has hired state aid specialists, who actually we do work with in the district, to come in on, I believe it's February 6th or 7th, and I think it's February 7th. Let individualized meetings to take a look at your calculation methodology, to ensure that they feel so that you are doing it in the best manner that's been prescribed. What I think will be helpful to the district is that it will put probably everybody, all of our neighbors on the same basis of understanding how it should be done, because we do want all of our account relations to be done exactly the same, with the same root of the numbers to come from the same, on the same basis. So that way, when everything is publicized, where whose cap is this and whose cap is that, we'll be able to think, feel a little bit more confident that we all keep on the same page on it. So I'll be participating in that or in OC's on February 7th. And then, last but not least, we're going to be assessing our other revenue sources, which are very limited, but we need to take a look at that. One of the things that will be interesting is when we're reviewing this, as part of our later on in the budget, let's see that we are, we have an RFP, upper banking services, certainly related, kind of all ties in. Citizens Bank, we did a lot of our banking, and we still do. Citizens Bank is no longer seemingly really interested in government banking. Apparently, they're going in a different direction. So we do have our, yeah, the banking services. This could be an interesting part of our evaluation of the revenue sources. As interest, even though interest is pretty limited, we'll be able to maximize our interest in other services that the banks will be able to provide to us as one of our revenue sources. So we will be looking at all of our other revenue sources, analyzing where we are, doing Our next steps will be that, what I want to do in the next, spoke with the superintendent about this, most likely at our next meeting, I want to be able to provide to Board of Education something that we're coming budget books. We want to be able to actually give you a binder, a book, that we can, we can provide specific data so you can, we can all keep collectively, that you can raise all the future budget meetings, so we can talk about things, and you'll have it all in front of you to peruse, add to as things change. The other thing we're going to do is we're going to provide similar budget books to principals and program directors. We'll be sitting down, going over their specific budgets with them. I can't speak to exactly how it was done in the past, but the superintendent and I have discussed this that morning, and we do really want to make it an interactive, an interactive activity. Is that really the right word? We want to make sure that, that principals aren't just given an allocation and asked, and ask them to divvy up as they see fit. We want to sit down with them, and we're going to be doing that in our February 8th, and I believe it's probably won't, won't be on the agenda. Budget builders, we want to have them participate at the bottom up to make sure that I know what they feels that they need to have in their budget, that superintendent can be an integral part of that process exactly. We agree we should have this, and we don't need so much of that. So we'll be meeting with them too and providing to them budget builder books.
What do you mean by budget builders?
Budget builders are really anybody at, in most cases, looking at principals, but they would also be, like Hallie is considered a budget builder, she's not, she's a director. So anybody who's going to really be in charge of administering a portion of the budget, takes ownership to a specific portion of the budget, is considered a budget builder. This is something that I have not dealt with in the past, but I understand historically Hamburg has had a budget ambassador committee, and superintendent has indicated that he is going to be commending and meeting potentially for the 17, and schedule meetings thereafter. So that are one of the next steps that we are going to be at. And then we're going to continue to provide to the Board of Education regular updates in both the regular meetings and budget workshops. So though we didn't really have any new numbers or any really information that we actually have in the past, we did want to sort of give you an idea of where we are, what we are working on, and where we're going.
Do we anticipate having presentations at each school again this year, much as you did last year, Steve?
I would expect that, yes. Once, once we get the state aid figures, then we're going to have our revenue picture laid out so that we'll know what our exact budget gap is. And until, until we have that, and then in early February, if we do have a retirement incentive, we have more of the picture in terms of an expenditure reduction for next year. So as the information comes together, we'll be able to better assess where we are and then start making the presentations at that point.
Are there any other questions on our process where we're going, where we decide we should put work in?
Great, thanks, Bob.
Moving on, I'm going to ask for a motion for our consensus items. Before I ask for that motion, just to make a quick reference to some of the issues addressed in the consensus items. Minutes of the board meetings, some personnel items, a Wii game, should I be specifically reading that one?
It's a donation.
It's a donation that there was, and actually we'll, should we go through each of these as a separate motion, do you believe?
No, I think the consensus, I think as you're doing, as you're reviewing it, I think it's fine.
Someone did, we were donated a Wii gaming system for the high school visit department, field trip for the boys lacrosse team training.
Can I guess, then we just pull G4B separately and just discuss that before, approve that one separately?
Did you get a motion yet? I haven't gotten a motion yet, I'm just summarizing.
Once we get a motion, I'll.
Okay. So there are a couple of field trips discussed, and then also some, some committee and subcommittee on special education that are included in this.
Remember on the addendum, we also have the field trip to the Science Oliviattic Neshas College on February 4th. So we have that addendum that we're working off of as well.
Okay, so let me first ask for, recommend a motion that approval be given to all the consensus items under section G.
A motion pulling G4B for discussion.
And a second for that motion?
Second.
Okay, and a motion that will be, the motion is to pull G4B for discussion. Then can I request on a vote that approval be given to all consensus items under section G excluding G4B? Is that a moment? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay, now let us go back to a discussion of G4B. Is that okay? G4B to read this, it says here, date changed field trip previously approved by the Board of Education on December 13th, the Hamburg Middle School Level 7 Spanish to New York City. We had been hoping that we, there was a request for an extended field trip to the Hamburg Middle School Level 7 Spanish to New York City on April 6th to 15, 2012.
Yes, two things. One is, I am, I think this is great that these kids get a chance to explore and do some other things. I've got two concerns with this one though. One is, it would appear that's 10 days long.
But my understanding is it's, it's to be included within those days, but it's not actually those days.
Correct.
I, I'm a parent of a kid who potentially might be going, and I think it said six to nine or nine to, you know, so that it won't actually be all of those days.
Okay. My, my second concern would be, it would appear that 40, 40 children are going on this trip, is that right?
Right.
Approximately?
It's open to that many.
It's open to that many. My concern would be, you know, we have a great environment for these kids to learn, and our giving them great opportunities. At the seventh grade, which, where language is being introduced, it would seem to be a little overkill to send them on a $640 trip. My concern would be, there are some parents that are going to be in that class that can't afford it. What are they going to do? How do you look at your seventh grader in the eye and say, sorry, we can't do that? So it, it seems a little mismatched. How do you, in eighth grade or ninth grade or 10th grade, outdo the seventh grade field trip of going to New York City? Or in future years, the art society might go, might go to explore museums and do that and say, well, I already went to, and they might not be able to take advantage of that, so.
I'm not, I'm not sure if it's, if it's outdoing something. First, you know, let me address the, the, there is, there is some fundraising that will take place as well. So they're hoping to reduce the impact on individual parents and families based on that fundraising. So hopefully, you know, that money will, you know, take away a portion of that expense. The other part, and I think, you know, we stated at the last board meeting that Greg is working on bringing together all of the field trip aspects and looking at not only the monetary cost of these, but also is it appropriate, similar questions to what you're asking, if, what level do we go to? Are there more appropriate activities that we can do locally than traveling a certain distance in order to have that take place? But until we have that study done, it's, it's hard to make a judgment on what's acceptable and what's not. So these trips have been successful in the past, and, you know, we're basing our recommendation on that past success.
Okay, my concern would be that since we're, at middle school, it can be very difficult for young children to, you know, be, want to be one of the popular kids and want to be, you know, one that, who comes from a family that can afford to do that, but then there's some kids who can't afford to do that, and it creates this inequity that, you know, that we as a district have to be sensitive to. And so, you know, in middle school, I know that they have, they had some of these trips, and, you know, one class went to Philadelphia, one went to Washington DC, and one went on a whitewater rafting trip for a day. You know, there's just, it just doesn't seem, what did those kids, some of those kids felt, you know, what did they do wrong that they didn't get to go on a three-night overnight stay or a? So I think we just, we have to be, I'm glad Greg's looking into that, because I think there's a lot of inequity that we have to be sensitive to and that we're creating. I want these kids to learn, want them to learn Spanish. They could go to Dunton and Light Institute on Elwood Avenue and visit for free.
I know, I know in the past, we did have, where they had a senior class with a new team building at the end of May at Cedar Point. I mean, you know, we squashed that, saying, oh, the team building, we got to come to school, that, that team building, that's part of it. But, I mean, we need to make sure we.
Well, we did do a questionnaire a couple of years ago, feeling badly about the same issue, you know, what about the family that is, that they have a fan trip for a thousand dollars, and then they have an any jet trip for a thousand dollars.
There was about fundraising. Are we doing too much fundraising? Because we answered, we participated in that survey as, as parents. It wasn't about, are we, are we creating an environment that's creating inequity amongst our kids? Or are we creating an environment that isn't fostering what we really intended it to do? So I, I'm sensitive to that, and I, I think it's a good idea, and I'm glad someone's looking into it.
I think we, you know, we looked at it from the expense side. We need to look at it of the instructional benefit versus the loss of instructional benefits. You just kind of added a new dimension to it, you know, is it, is it age appropriate? Are we putting, setting kids up for other issues to deal with that they can't go? We talked about, informally about the parent that has three kids, and they're all going three different places, and they're all $650, you know, or they're the same child and they want to do all of those.
Well, the parents are going on vacation, but they can't, because the kid wants to go to this thing with this trip that was supposed to be.
So we want to look at it more comprehensively to do that, but that, you know, even the ones we did a couple of years ago, it takes time and just getting people together, but I think we need to look at all the aspects of it, not, not just the expense. But you're right, Cedar Point, and you and Polly isn't the best time to build a team, but, you know, on those kinds of things, you still get. And breaking traditions could be fun.
Yeah, well, that's the only thing, if we, we create this momentum of, well, the last year's question did it, so, and so how do you?
I'd say the same with that every year, you can categorize, you go to the first grade, you go to the middle, or whatever, however you go.
Wyoming, they have something in Wyoming.
But every time it's something, you know, it's a, think outside the box a little bit, you know, be creative, but don't go overboard.
Is this something that the board should, I don't know if you want to, I don't know if I'd say as, goes far as create a committee, but like you were talking, so you take a look at all the field trips comprehensively and see how one builds on top of each other, and are there duplications? Are we really putting some, some families in financial hardships by doing, by doing this? And as Bob said, some families have to make some really difficult decisions as to whether they can send their kid to a field, on a field trip or on vacation, or, there's sex questions need to be made.
I've lived through it. I mean, personally, obviously, I've been involved in a lot in school, and I went on the Washington DC trip with my team. And I didn't go on the band trip when I was in 10th grade, because I was already in Washington DC, and I didn't want my parents to repay for it. Now, when I'm in 7th grade, I really don't care what you're showing me in all these meetings, personally. Like, I really didn't. I just wanted to be with my friends, I wanted to go to Washington DC. I liked staying in the hotel room more, and I liked going out and walking around Washington DC. Like, I, I really, I didn't know what.
The elevator ride, it was more fun.
Like, I didn't know what Republican was, and I didn't know what Democrat was, I was in 7th grade. But like, if I went in 10th grade with band, I feel as though I would appreciate those things so much more than I would when I was in 7th grade, so. And I was in the whole seven Spanish too, like, looking at it, going to New York City. It really is a phenomenal experience, because I've traveled a lot to school, but I don't feel as if it's appropriate for that level. And this is coming from a person that goes on the trips and understands what happened on the trip. Like, sometimes, yeah, they have really great experiences on the trip, but it doesn't mean as much at that level than it should.
I mean, just, you know, we've talked about follow-up of this. What we'll do is, and then our first step is to gather some information, and first of all, that information should be perhaps over the last couple of years, what field trips were approved by the Board of Education, where'd they go, who did it involve, what the cost was. And so we can have information for you to take a look at in terms of at what levels are we traveling, and what's the issues, or what are the areas of study that we're, we're undertaking. And then we'll get into more, you know, putting together a group internally to take a look at whether it's age appropriateness, whether it's subject appropriateness, looking at the value of the trips to the kids, as well as the expense side, and be able to report to you, I would suggest, you know, back between April and May, somewhere between April and May for you. Would that be acceptable? Okay?
And yet so far, I think our approach has been in general to consider each one individually of the tribe, who have understanding that the teachers planning these trips have gone to great effort to put them together, to understand them for the moment, you know, until we come up with a whole overview of policy, it's probably reasonable to consider these, and this is actually a trip that has happened before, you actually went on, did you go on a similar trip?
No, no, we did our, on our teams.
We already approved this, we, we force, and what we're doing now is just to move the time, the date change.
Right, I just want to make sure that it wasn't a 10-day trip.
No, no.
$640 would be a good deal.
Or 10-day trip.
I'd sign up. I'm bringing the whole family. Yeah, we're sticking.
Okay, a motion to approve, a second? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay. Moving on then to the action items, which we will go through. So first action item and recommend a motion that approval be given to the resolution establishing a standard workday for the firms that determine the days work reportable to New York State and local employees retirement system. And this isn't changing anything to do with the workday, it's just writing it up in the proper terms so that it therefore can be reported to the New York, is that correct?
So that they have a basis of retirement limits.
Can I suggest a motion, a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, moving on to the next one. I recommend a motion that the Board of Education hereby approves the agreement between the district and the summit educational services to provide behavioral education consultation effective January 3rd, 2012 to January 22nd, 2012. Motion? So moved? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, then moving on to the extraclassroom activity fund. Recommend a motion that the Board of Education hereby accepts the recommendations of adoption of company LLP, the district internal auditor regarding the extraclassroom activity fund. This refers to the meeting that we had earlier this evening.
So moved?
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, moving on to the next one. Recommend a motion that approval is given to the Hamburg Central School District's corrective action plan that will be submitted to the New York State Education Department and Office of the New York State Comptroller as a result of the 2010-11 independent audit of Lobston and McCormick and their management letter.
This is an annual requirement of a district based on the external audit, so we're following through with our external audit filing this. Corrector?
Motion? So moved? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we all, we have retirement incentive. Recommend a motion that the Board of Education and the Hamburg Central School District approve the retirement incentive memorandum of agreement between the district and the Hamburg Teachers Association.
So moved?
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
The APPR, this is a recommended motion, that the, that based upon the recommendation of the superintendent's schools, the Hamburg Central School District Board of Education hereby adopts the amended annual professional performance review plan, APPR presented to the Board retroactive to September 1, 2011. Motion?
So moved?
Can we just give a brief explanation beforehand? I'd ask Greg to just give, there were a few language changes in the body that you approved at the November board meeting, so Greg, if you just quickly go through that.
Also, more clarification, I see on page two, where, paragraph two, where it talks about this APPR plan and procedures and methods described here, shall apply to all classes of teachers of the common grand subjects of English Language Arts for mathematics in grades four through nine. We also had said teachers of mathematics, nine through 12. We have added the words, the APPR plan will pilot the APPR process for teachers of mathematics in grades nine through 12. However, physical math teachers will complete the APPR process, and only the expanded observation and the final narrative will be filed in the teacher's personnel files and is utilized with the HEMEO process. If they weren't under APPR, it would be the same, basically the same thing filed. Next page, we added, in section three, paragraph B, we added a sentence saying that the special education teachers will be evaluated using the special education rubric from the Charlotte Daniels and Enhancing Professional Practice, and added appendix O, which is also a carry over from the previous process. Not sure all of these pages will line up with the edits, but I'm looking at page eight, the unscheduled walkthroughs. We removed the word, the minimum of two observations, which does state that there would be two observations over the course of the school year, and we added, or changed the last sentence, that the lesson plan objectives cannot be articulated, and a score of one point will automatically be given for the loss, but originally that was zero points. On page ten, we added the sentence in section eight, paragraph C, this APPR plan only allows for teachers to be evaluated by indistinct principals and administrators, who is referred to as lead evaluators, with state requirements, basically you can bring in a third party to do the evaluation, to clarify that we were going to do that. And then on page twelve, what we did on page twelve, a few more specific dates, talking about training, that we would begin in January two thousand and twelve, and hopefully be passed by the HDA, we'll begin this month with the training, and then we just listed what we were going to provide training on, extended observations, walkthroughs, related forums, reflective of subjective narratives, data reviews, instructional plans, point distributions, and responsibilities for teachers and evaluators, and to complete that process by January thirty first. We added section D, if there is a concern raised with compliance to this document by lead evaluators, the superintendent will meet with the HDA president to take steps to ensure compliance. And then one more statement, and the new paragraph E, first paragraph, we added, the APPR committee will meet in March to begin reviewing plans for the two thousand and twelve, thirteen school year. The APPR committee will meet to review the two thousand and eleven, twelve plan by June fifteenth. Comprehensive review and redesign of the APPR plan for two thousand and twelve, thirteen will be scheduled for in July two thousand and twelve. Additional meetings will be scheduled as the, and the other use is the appeals process.
Yeah, lastly, the appeals process, that was negotiated through bargaining between the district and the HDA. It was added to the document. Basically, the appeals process will be a committee approach, it will be a committee of three teachers, chosen by the association president, and two administrators, chosen by the superintendent. One of those administrators, or either of those, cannot be the administrator who performed the evaluation, so it's two different administrators that knows that performed the evaluation. That committee will meet, they'll look at the evidence, they'll review evidence with the teacher that is appealing, and then they will make a recommendation to the superintendent, to myself, and then I will make a final recommendation on that appeals process. Again, I think that that's a, it's a good appeals process, and then it gives everybody an opportunity to take a look at what took place during the walkthroughs and the observation process for the individual teacher. So that is the comprehensive plan that you have in front of you that's being recommended.
Okay, so we did have a recommended motion, that we hereby adopt the amended annual APPR, APPR plan presented to the Board retroactive September first, two thousand and eleven. Do I have such a motion?
You already have it.
Voted, voted, a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we have one more action item, I believe, and that is resolution concerning mandate relief.
Right.
Do you want to make any comment about that, or no?
I think this is, mandate relief has been an issue that's been around for many years, that school districts and municipalities have been looking at for relief from New York State under certain mandates. The mandates that we're looking at here is the property tax gap and the impact that that's going to have on school districts, the triber amendment, unfunded and underfunded state mandates that lead to additional layoffs with school personnel, and as you can see, you know, there is a specific listing of six items, pension system reform, reform of arbitration, the Wicks Law, the triber amendment, containment of health insurance increases, and any, ban any future unfunded mandate for our public schools. That's the essence of this. This is going to be discussed at the legislative breakfast, that you have information with as well.
Okay, the recommended motion is that it be resolved by the Hamburg Central School District, that mandate relief must be addressed as New York, as New York State implements its two percent property tax levy cap. Do I have such a motion?
Yes.
A second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I believe that that covers all the information we need to be addressing with this, or we did, way back when, we didn't mention our coming up dates in terms of, the next budget work session is Tuesday, January twenty fourth, that's at the administration building. The next school board meeting is Tuesday, February fourteenth, is that correct, at the high school? And then we also have a budget work session on Tuesday, February twentieth, and you also have ambassadors, as the...
We're looking at ambassadors on the seventeenth.
So much for Valentine's Day.
Can I have a motion to call the, need to, opposed?
So moved?
Second? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you guys for joining us. Wish you so. No? No, no surveys, just...